Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I gotta turn you up. Can you talk again?
No, actually, it was too high. It was good.
Okay, got it.
Try it now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, still pretty loud. Let me see if I can turn it down.
Yeah, okay. Hey Jerry.
Hello.
We're having some computer issues today at the port office, so just gonna forewarn you that I might be a little bit slower on the transitions. That I don't really am. We've got an update running that's kind of blocking access to drives and such, but I think I've got everything we need. I hope. I might have to look it up on the fly. Hi Darren. Can you hear me okay? Okay. We're still getting everybody together, so it'll be a few minutes. Hey John.
Hi Genevieve.
I like your new background.
Yeah.
I need to add my background game.
Oh no, it's right now. For some reason, it's changed. For some reason, it's right now. It's the really old picture of the Hood River Bridge.
Yeah, that's cool.
Isn't that awesome?
Pre-lift span.
Yep, yep. The actual background is the doghouse.
Which is cool looking too.
Yeah, but maybe not understood by all. We're having some great Friday jams again, though.
Oh man, I gotta, I gotta get out there.
You've got a lot on your plate currently.
Awesome, come in.
Hey Johnny. You're not in an underground bunker somewhere in southwest.
No, I'm not.
Anymore.
Hood River Airport in the yellow hangar.
What should find more interesting, the yellow hangar or underground bunker?
Well, I don't know. There was certainly interesting facets about the old Afghanistan.
Yeah. Johnny, is Jeremy gonna be joining us? Or are you gonna leave?
No, Jeremy might stop by here in the next little bit. But they kind of handed this off to me to present tonight, but yeah.
All right, Michael, it's five o'clock. We have a quorum. Are we, anybody from staff missing? We need to wait a minute for?
I don't think so. I don't see, is Daryl on the line? I don't see her. We should, we can probably get started then.
All right, then I will call this meeting of the Port of Hood River Commission to order. Was there any public, excuse me, any additions to the agenda from staff? Modifications?
No, none from staff.
I didn't receive anything from commissioners. Was there anything from the commissioners last minute? Okay.
President Shepard, I just realized Commissioner Strike is not on.
He had an incident at work that's gonna delay him. I'm not sure if he's gonna make it or not. I talked to him.
Thank you.
Was there any public comment received this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Then I didn't receive any comments on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion there. Anyone that's not on mute?
Yeah, I've got one comment on that that I wanted to make before we did a motion. On page 21 of the package. On the executive director contract. The one issue that I've got with this is I was not in position when the port administrator, the executive director was reviewed last year. And last year, he, according to the document on page 21, it said the commission's overall evaluation of ED's performance in 2021 review period met or exceeded expectations. As long as my vote doesn't mean I agree with that because I, I don't know. I wasn't here to review his performance for that year. I can only say what's been going on in the, in the first two months of this fiscal year. But as far as this particular report. My acknowledgement here should not be construed as I agree that his performance met or exceeded expectations last year because I wasn't here.
Understand, and the three of us that are voting on this tonight, Commissioner Garing as well, both of you have the exact same, are in the same situation there. So what I can say to that, and all I can say to that is this is a recommendation of the personnel committee, myself and Commissioner Chapman, after our negotiations and discussions with the executive director, this is our recommendation for this year. Any changes that we, or anything we decide to do differently moving forward will be for the next fiscal year, yeah.
Okay. So I guess I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Items A through E on page, on the agenda of September 7th, 2021.
Commissioner Chapman can second.
All right, move down seconded. All in favor, and we're gonna need to say our names. Don't forget, we're back to this.
I'm Gary Dye.
Commissioner Fox.
Chapman, I.
And Shepard is I as well. Consent agenda is passed. I received nothing for informational reports, so we're gonna move directly to a presentation on the FBO operations at the Kenjiro and Sett Airfield. Michael.
Yeah, thanks commissioners. With us tonight is Johnny Young. Representing Tac Arrow, the commission approved a five-year contract with Tac Arrow as the FBO in August, and we felt it was an opportunity to get Tac Arrow in front of you, a chance to hear a little bit about their operations and an opportunity to ask questions. So with that, Johnny, if you have any guests, you should introduce them, but welcome.
Okay, yeah, I've got here in the room now, I got Jeremy showed up and also Brian Prang, who are here to answer questions if need be. And did you want me to share the presentation, or is that gonna be populated for us, or?
I can do it, and you'll just let me know when you want to advance to the next slide.
Awesome, perfect. So just a real quick introduction on, on who I am. I'm Johnny Young. I actually used to run this FBO back in 2009 with Classic Wings when I was fresh out of my undergraduate degree. I have an undergraduate degree from Utah University for aviation business, and I, I came here to Hood River. I ran Classic Wings for about two, two years with Scott Gifford. Hood River, this FBO is near and dear to my heart. It's kind of where I, I, one of my first real jobs out of, out of college. After that, my time there, I joined a defense contractor in Las Vegas, where I flew unmanned aircraft and manned aircraft in Afghanistan and Iraq and all across the Arabian Peninsula for about five years. We have a bunch of kids, and so it was time to stop doing that, and we moved to Prescott, Arizona, where I was a professor for five years at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. And I ran the Unmanned Aircraft Systems Degree Program there for five years. And that was a, that was a joy. And then at this June, I came full-time with Tac Arrow and helping with the executive management of the, the airport and our operations, and so that's just a quick brief about, about me and what and what I've done. So I'm glad to meet you all. What we like to do, this is kind of Tac Arrow and who we are, we basically love aviation. This is who we are, this is what we do. I come from a family of aviators, and we love aviation. It's one of the things that, that we have been born into and we, we continue to, to want to share that passion and, and also to provide a really good service to those in our community, and we have a really unique opportunity to do that here at the Hood River Airport. Okay, next. So a little bit of background on, on Tac Arrow. Tac Arrow kind of first started out as a unmanned UAS, Unmanned Aircraft Systems integration specialist, so they would basically, we would put different payloads on aircraft to test them before they went on unmanned aircraft. And we did that for quite a few years. We have now operations in Hood River, the Dallas Port in Washington, Fredericksburgs, Texas, Mancito, Minnesota, and also in Prescott, Arizona. We have a deep, you know, rooted belief in being able to help support both our community and, and those in the area from an aviation standpoint, and, and we've been able to kind of do that and to also spread that across multiple different locations throughout the United States. And we've, we've been fairly successful with that. Okay?
Can you guys see that okay? Yeah, okay.
Okay. And if you guys have any questions during this, just go ahead and interrupt me, or you can wait till the end, whatever you'd like to do. So I'm, I'm easy when it comes to questions. If you have something, just, just kind of interrupt me. So why did we, why are we here? Why is the FBO here in, why do we, why do we have an interest in this FBO here in Hood River? When, when I was here running the FBO back in 2009 with Classic Wings, Hood River is a unique place to run an FBO because it's very seasonal, where you have a limited runway length. And then as Tac Arrow started to grow a little bit, one of the problems that we ran into was a fuel shortage here at the, the airport. They actually ran out of fuel. And so it was, it was detrimental to our operations, both from like a forest service standpoint, when we needed to go out and fly, and so we decided that maybe we could get more involved with the FBO, and that's what we decided to do. So the Tac Arrow acquired the Classic Wings FBO and name, and we've been in, in service to the, the airport ever since. We, we employ a lot of skilled folks. We have, as we said, we have the FBO also in the Dallas Port and, and here, so we can, we can share knowledge based on airports, we can share fuel between the two airports. We can do a lot of different things. It allows us to be pretty flexible, to provide a pretty good product when, when it all comes down to it. We, we pride ourselves on making sure that when people fly into Hood River, that they have a really good experience when they fly in here. Hood River is a unique, a unique place. There's a lot of folks that fly in here. This is a destination airport. And so when they do fly in, we have the Wham Museum, we have obviously the, the other attractions in the area that, that drive a, a great pilot group that comes in and out, and we strive to make sure that when they, when they do show up here at the Hood River Airport, that they have a really good experience, and, and we, we hope to grow that experience. We hope to grow the airport as we, as we move forward. Okay, next slide. So right now, what we offer here is we offer the 100 low lead fuel. We have both a 10,000 gallon tank, and then we also have a fuel truck. We offer maintenance services on the airfield. We have flight training on demand, which means that we, if, if a flight, if somebody comes into the FBO and they need to receive flight training, we have instructors that are based in the Dallas that can reposition here to Hood River if, if needed. We also offer a, a 135 charter service for VFR daytime operations. And we also do scenic flights, introductory flights, and we, we do a lot of these things. Obviously, these are things that are in the, in the contract for the FBO that we intend to uphold and do. The 135 and the scenic flights are in addition to just nice things to have for when folks come to the area and, and see, we have a lot of folks wanting to do scenic rides, both in our Cessnas and also in our antique biplanes that we offer. So you'll see probably this weekend, the biplane doing rides for the Wham flying. That's all provided by Tac Arrow. So that's, those are the surfaces that we currently offer. Okay, so running an FBO in Hood River is not an easy thing. And the reason why is because we're small. We don't have a lot of volume. It's just, it's just one of those things. It's a beautiful airfield. It's something that we're definitely enchanted with, and we want to make sure that, that we do it, we do it well. But when it comes down to it, running the numbers and who we are and what we do, it's, 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 it's pretty difficult to actually, from a business standpoint, to, to make it all perfect and work from a spreadsheet standpoint. So you can kind of see on this graph here, we have one full-time employee, several part-time employees, we have two full-time mechanics, one IA, which is an inspection authorization. And AMPD, these are, these are qualified, certified mechanics. They're not just, you know, run-of-the-mill folks. These are people that you have to have working on your airplane, so they demand, you know, a higher wage. And then we have CFIs, as I said, on, on demand out of the, out of the Dallas. And we've, another reason we, you know, there's been complaints about the, the noise at the airport. We tried to accommodate that by moving a lot of the train to the Dallas, where it's, you know, more sparsely populated, trying to be good neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor. And then the part where we actually make money is, is on the fuel, where we can, where there is some profit on the fuel. But if you can look at our, our overhead and where we actually make some money, you know, it's, you can see that it's not a money-making venture by any stretch of the imagination for, for the, the FBO here in Hood River. It just, it just isn't. The, the things that we, the reason, so you might ask, why, why are you doing that then? And the reason why is because we do provide, it does provide us the infrastructure to operate and to do our other things that we do. And so it is definitely something that, and, and we want to do it, you know, we want to be, and we know how to do it. And so we, we definitely want to, to continue to provide a service that, that we know how to do, and that can help us with our, with our other endeavors here in the field. Okay, next slide. This is, one of the things that we haven't been super successful in admittedly has been communication with the port. And it's one of the things that, when speaking with the other members of management, I was, I was adamant that we try and fix this to make sure that we have a monthly report to all the commissioners that's clear and concise, that allows for you to understand what's happening at the airport. That allows for questions to be asked, if they need to be asked. So for a lot of transparency and for just the, the idea that you can understand where we're at at any given time. And so this is, this is an example of the monthly reporting that you guys received. And, and we welcome feedback on that. If there is something that you would like, I'm not gonna go through it, you guys have already seen parts of it, but if there is things that you would like to be added to the report, we welcome that. There's something that you would like to do, but, you know, we've basically just done airport activity, flight training, night flights, just some, some, some form, you know, the, the amount of operations that we have from a Tac Arrow standpoint. And then just an actual estimate on operations in and out of the airport. Now, that is, those are estimates because we can't obviously employ somebody to count every airplane in and out. But we have a pretty good idea on when the bulk of the aircraft come, come and leave. So, yeah, next slide. This is also the continuation of kind of what we, what we providing in our monthly reporting. We hope that it, it gives you a good idea of kind of where strengths, weaknesses, threats to the, to the airport, on what we are kind of seeing. And, and per our, our new contract that says, you know, to add into the, the fuel flowage fees, we're, we're still working towards an agreement on that and where that fits in and how that fits in. And that's something that we're, we're actively pursuing. So this is, again, this is just the continuation of the report that you should have already received. Next. All right, so we have executed and signed the, the five-year agreement as of August 1st, and like I said, we are super excited about continuing our involvement here in the River Airport. It's been something, I feel like it's part of my, kind of who I am, what I do. It's been part of my, my upbringing as a professional. And it's, it's, it's also a really unique airport. I have flown really all over the world. I have flown in various different countries, various different platforms, and there really is no place quite like Hood River. And so we want to continue to keep its uniqueness. We want to make sure that those that, that there's plans to grow the airport in a smart and, and industrial way, so that way we can, we can make good plans for good partners and be able to, to help. You know, whether that's hangar infrastructure or, or fuel sales or whatever that is, that's something that we really want to do. This, this airport does have potential to do some really neat things, and we, we have ideas on how we might be able to do that going forward in the future, and we would love to be a part of that. And we want to be better at what we do, ultimately. I mean, constructive criticism is, is good criticism. That's good stuff to have, and, and we want to be able to be a good steward of the airport. We feel like it's a, it's an opportunity to, to again show the public and, and also educate the public and educate students and, and, and all people, ages and sizes and everything, and we would love to make sure that we, we were doing that. So that's, that's kind of our commitment to what we've, what we've signed up to, and that's what we would like to get, continue moving forward with. Next. Any questions that you guys might have for me?
Hey Genevieve, could we go back one slide? I've got a question.
Yeah.
Johnny, this is Ben Shepard. I'm asking you one real quick.
This one?
Yeah, thank you. Johnny, this is Ben Shepard. That bottom bullet point, continue to hone the offered services. Can you take us through just a little bit how you see those services over the course of the next five to 10 years, where you see opportunity there and where you want to be?
Sure, absolutely. I think we, I mean, as you guys know, the, the waiting list for hangers is, is very long. There's a long list of hangers. This, this is a desirable place to, to, to keep and store your airplane. We have people coming through all the time wanting to, you know, to get on the list or to whatever, and then when they, when they hear that, it's, it's, it's tough. Because it's, it's, I'm not even sure what it is now. I know when I was here previously, it was, you know, a, a year out or at least something like that. So that's one area. The other area that is, you know, continued expansion on the north ramp, larger aircraft, or larger hangers. So that we might be able to incite some of these businesses in the area, including our parent business, to maybe relocate and, and provide some of their, their aviation slash technology stuff to the airport. That, that seems super interesting to me. It seems like there's, it seems like a no-brainer to me. There seems like there's a lot of, there's room over there to expand. It seems like there's a, there's a, there's, I know that's hopefully part of the, the master plan, and then we're moving forward or trying to move forward with some of that. And then, you know, our FBO is, is cute and, and, and nice, but it is old. You know, it's, it's an older FBO. It's, it's, it's been dated, and we've tried to keep it up, and I know the port's been trying to keep it up. But we have old hangers, we have old buildings, we, we have kind of an older, an older airport, you know, we kind of, if, if you were to ask a pilot when they came into our airport, they would think we're probably like an old crop dusting airport, which is accurate. And so, you know, but my vision is, you know, to hopefully have the Hood River Airport to be a gateway to the fruit country and to, to bring folks in here and to be more of a tourism, be part of our, our, our economic engine of being, you know, with, with the tourism and being able to help help drive those things. And so hangar space, just, just transient hangar space even. You know, people fly in for the weekend and they'd love to, to put their airplane in a hangar for a little bit. We are, we are low on hangar space. We have no hangar space. And so when somebody flies in in a million-dollar airplane, and we have to park it on the dirt for a tie-down, that's, that's rough. It's really tough. And so we would love to, to try and, and increase, you know, tie-downs, hangers, and just, oh, the overall appearance of our airport over the next five years. And, and I know that's tough because that takes capital investment, but I think that there's probably some ways that we could probably do that, to incentivize folks to, to do that, and I'm, and I'm happy to, to help with those things.
I appreciate it. Thank you. A lot of those ideas sound like it might take more than one full-time employee. Is that part of your plan? If, if- If, if we start doing these things as a part of the plan to have more employees there?
Well, you know, we can always do with, as the revenue can go up. I mean, we're, we're business-driven and we're held to an Excel spreadsheet, just like everybody else is. And so right now it's tough to justify another full-time employee with, with our numbers and what we do. The benefit of what we do have is that I can steal people from different areas and bring them in to help. And so with, you know, the Dallas FBO or whatever it is, we can, we can allow other folks to come in and help. And it offsets by not putting all of that burden onto the Hood River FBO and its business line. And so that's something that we are currently doing and we can continue to do so as, as things start to get busier.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Fox. Hey, thanks so much for your presentations. Very interesting. And I'm, I'm really hopeful, when I heard you say that you're interested in working with the port to grow our airport, make it a little nicer and so on. The challenge that we have that you've got to understand, Johnny, and, and maybe you can help us, is that this airport is not self-sustaining as we speak today. And, and over time, we have been drawing down funds from the, the bridge and the tolls. Those are going to go away. So we've got to figure a way of making the airport self-sustaining and, and at least cost-neutral to revenue. And I agree with you. The infrastructure there is pretty beat up, pretty old. And, and I agree with the comment that it's a crop duster little airport, what it looks like. But I think we've got to decide what we want to be when we all grow up. And, and then we've got to figure out how we're going to get there. The challenge being, we don't have a lot of money. And I don't see a, you know, a, a great big windfall of money coming our way. So if you've got ideas, man, please bring them up.
Yeah, and you know, I think we have, one of the things that's really unique to the river is that there's been several folks that probably would, would be interested in, in providing funds and infrastructure for lease agreements or whatever it is to help, to help unify and, and make the, the airport into what we all would like it to be. So that's something that we could probably start moving down, you know, or at least exploring the options. And it's just getting private folks that have some, some money that they would like to invest with, with the approval of, of the port and working with you guys to, to, to talk to these individuals and bring them in and say, hey, maybe, yeah, we can't afford a $2 million hangar complex, but maybe somebody else could and we could give them a lease agreement on something like that. I mean, my experience, I was, we have a hangar down in, in Prescott, Arizona. And, and what they do is they do something similar to that, you know, they, they have folks come in with money and they do lease agreements with them. And, and there's, there's money to be made for the, for the city of Prescott or the city of Fredericksburg or whatever it is. And they take a percentage of that and then the rest goes back to the, the, the investor. And then after a certain amount of time, that land lease either gets renewed or changed or whatever it comes. It's just part of those deals. And so those are things that we can look into that I think are really, are really, really important. And I would, one of the things that, you know, we want you, I want you to be able to come up to the airport anytime you'd like to. Give me a call or whoever and come and see what we're doing and, and kind of see how we're moving and, and the areas in which we would like to, you know, some of the ideas that we have to, to bounce off you guys and, and, and see where we might be able to, to, to grow and to be smarter. So yeah, I'm happy to do that kind of stuff.
I'll take you up on it. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I just a comment, Johnny from staff, real quick. I'm the communications person here and I very much appreciate the night flight stats. It's really helpful for us to know the ratio of fire versus other, especially during prior season. It really helps us respond to complaints, to know that those flights, how many of those flights are public safety. It's really helpful.
Perfect. Yeah. And that was, that was something that I didn't really talk about. But, you know, we're a strategic airport for the Forest Service.
Right.
We've seen this time and time again. I mean, we are really strategic when it comes to that. And there's another area of, of, you know, investigating how we might be able to be more profitable for that as well. So.
Yeah, keep, keep that stat in the report. That's helpful for me.
I will do that.
I was just going to make a comment. This is Commissioner Chapman, that I found that whole report very interesting. And so I really appreciate the data and the numbers that you're sharing. And I think that starting off with a better two-way communication thing is only going to lead to, to good things moving forward. So thank you for all of that. Appreciate it.
I agree. Thank you for doing that, Johnny. Appreciate it. This in, you know, five years, I think this is the first time we've actually done this. I like to do it every year. I love the reports. It's exactly what we needed. I like to do this every year as well. So thank you for the time.
Yep. And we also have a, a gift for you guys from our, our airborne deal. We'll, we'll bring this down to the, to the, the port offices so you can hang it wherever you like to in the background here. So.
Thanks, Johnny. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right, we'll see you later.
All right, Fred, are you ready to chat about a financial report? Excuse me, that's not it. That's not.
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Excuse me, I put Fred on the spot and he's not there. This is Kevin's turn on the remaining HB 2017 tasks funding discussion.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Just felt like this would be a good time to do an update on the House Bill 2017 funding and, and some options related to some of the new projects that have been prioritized. And, and I, I think we're going to have some really good options for you at the end of this presentation. But there's also a reason to celebrate as well. So as, it's probably not a surprise to anyone, but we're coming near the end of the House Bill 2017 funds. We've got about $463,000 remaining. About half of that is earmarked for the final EIS and ROD. There has been interest in prioritizing the replacement bridge management contract procurement process along with an updated and new preliminary cost estimate, both of which were not initially included in the current fiscal year budget. And I think we're going to be able to show how we can get, get to where the Bi-State Working Group and ultimately the commission would like to be. But I, I want to point out this fourth bullet as well. And that's that within six months, the port and the Port Commission will have followed through on its commitment to the Oregon Legislature to complete the EIS and the other studies that were initially lobbied for back in 2017. And so I think that that is something that the port should celebrate and be aware of. And some of the next points are really just talking about how we're going to complete this project. So as we come near the end of this effort, we have the remaining amount for the WSP contract. There's the continued project staffing, continued governance and project advising. There's the updated replacement bridge management contract, the procurement documents, which we discussed with the Bi-State Working Group last week. There's continued review by ODOT for their technical review of the final EIS Section 106 process. The other one, which is relatively big and important, is the preliminary cost estimate amendment. And at this point, after we did the cost to complete, there, there really is not an identified contingency at this point. And so I'm throwing in 10,000 because that's not included in the spreadsheet. But there should be some placeholder for those unforeseen elements. So when we met with the Bi-State Working Group last week, there were some recommendations from the group. One is to recommend, and this is a recommendation to the Port Commission, to follow through on the procurement of the development of the RBMC selection, which is an item later on in the agenda. And second, to proceed with the WSP amendment for the preliminary cost estimate. There were some open options as far as the funding, where we were going to get the funding for the final these, these two items with, as we come to the end of House Bill 2017. And it's going to be a little bit before the $15 million comes to fruition. I anticipate that the Washington Transfer Funds via ODOT will come, the grant agreement will come in by the end of this calendar year. Build hopefully will be shortly thereafter. And then the $5 million from the Oregon Legislature this year were ARPA funds and they're continuing to negotiate with the feds as to how those are going to be distributed. That'll be later on in the spring. So as you saw the, the spreadsheet in your packet, the way that we're currently looking is that there would be about a $22,000 overage with the $5 million from House Bill 2017. You know, that could be 32 million based upon added contingency. But I would like to just identify a couple of options that staff has, has reviewed for your consideration. One being to wait two to three months to commit to the new work, that being the procurement work for the replacement bridge management contract until, and the cost estimate, new cost estimate, until the new grant agreement is signed. As I noted, ODOTs and WashDOT have indicated that those funds would be available into the year. I did pursue pre-award options with ODOT and those will likely not be available. So that's one option is wait until we have those grant agreements signed. But we also have a, a, a second option. And that's to reduce some of the work that is currently projected. So we have had a little bit of a delay in the Oregon process for the Bi-State Bridge Authority legislation. And we plan on having a meeting with key legislators for the Joint Transportation Committee. But I don't anticipate that there will be a big push to develop the Oregon legislation for a month or two as we get closer to the end of the year. So we could pull back a little bit on that. That was initially included in your packet. And then really monitor the expenditures that are remaining to meet that House Bill 2017 budget. And, and that really becomes incumbent on staff to monitor the funding that is remaining and to make sure that we pare back in an effort to hit that $5 million market mark before the other grant agreements come on board. And if for some reason something does come up, then at that time, staff would return with options and an expla, an explanation as to why we may need to, you know, dip into or delay some other non-bridge project or what, what other options there may be. So, so those are the two options. I, I think one kind of jumps out automatically. And that's to, to pull back on some of the current efforts. But I just wanted to, I think that's the last one, leave, leave this up as, as an opportunity for the commission to provide feedback and discussion for funding the two other items later on in the agenda.
Anybody have a question for Kevin on that section?
No, this is Commissioner Chapman. I just wanted to clarify a little bit that it was the, the Bi-State Working Group really wanted to push the, the, the second route and get things moving now so that we can show everyone that we're, we're real serious about putting this project as, you know, first on our list. So just wanted to share that.
I'd like to, Commissioner Shepard, can, can you guys hear me? I don't know if.
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure. So Kevin, this is asking for another cost estimate. Am I correct? The last cost estimate was about 10 to 12 months ago. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's about right.
So we're going to get another cost estimate because we feel that it's going to move the needle. And if it does move the needle, meaning more than 10%, then why, why is that important right now?
Jerry, let me, let me jump in on that. The last cost estimate that was done, wasn't done, it was accomplished. It was not documented very well. It really did, the reader doesn't understand what's in, what's not in. The data that's in there actually goes all the way back to 2008. Most of the cost that's in there is about 2011, just adjusted for escalation, which is done very, very, very grossly. There's lots of costs that are not included in there, such as owner, owner-related costs. It's that estimate, you can't really use it for anything. And, and Jerry, right now we're going out, we're trying to attract a bunch of money for this bridge. And we really don't have a leg to stand on how much money we need.
So when we talk about how we're going to use a cost estimate, let's say you move forward with this. And let's just say we're using this cost estimate to get funding. So we're, how we get funding, two sources, right? We get funding from state legislatures or the federal government or we have to get it from ourselves through bond. So if I'm looking at getting money from the state legislature in 2022, they're in the short session. They're not going to give us any money. That happens in 2023. So in 2022, the only person that's going to give us money is the federal government. So, and if that's in an infra grant, then tho, those guidelines are going to hit us till February. So that, I guess if we're going to spend the money, you may want to have it covered by a grant.
I, I'll tell you, Jerry, I think being this late in the game and not knowing what the cost is going to be on this thing is, it's not right. This is not the way you build projects. This is not the way you plan a project. You're this far into it and you don't know.
I'm saying, I don't disagree. I don't disagree with how you want this cost estimate. How are you going to use it? When are you going to need that amount of money? When do you need to have that number?
And Jerry, this was in the WSP original contract and you guys took it out. Why did you take it out?
Okay, Commissioner Fox, I'm not Jerry. I'm Fred.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fred. I, I thought it was Jerry. I apologize.
I still have a little hair. Okay. Not much, but a little bit. Is Jerry on? But no, my position is just this. If you need, and it moves that, that earlier cost estimate is wrong and it's going to be significant under a new cost estimate, okay. But I need to use that new cost estimate. The, the only, the only piece of funding would be the federal government. And that's coming forward and what is the, whatever the new call, the infra grant process will occur. That won't occur till February at the earliest. And that's that new infrastructure bill making its way through Congress. That's the point I'm trying to make. So if we're going to do it, we probably want to have one of the five, or one of the three grants, the Build Grant, the Washington Grant or the Oregon Grant, pay for it. That's all I'm saying.
And I'm saying if we can figure out how to do it before then, let's get ahead of schedule. Let's, let's get moving on this thing.
Kevin, you said there's, if you go back a slide or two, which I don't need to see, there's, we know fifteen million dollars is coming.
Yeah, that's right.
That's not, that's not a fifteen million we're trying to get. That's fifteen million dollars that's coming.
That's correct.
Is there any, is that money only reimbursable to tasks that have been completed? I guess, I guess a better way to put that is, would they reimburse a task that has started before the money is awarded? Or is it only for tasks that are begun after the funds are awarded? So could we start something now with our money and reimburse ourselves with the awarded money?
So if you recall, I, there was a bullet about pre-award status. And so that's what we were trying unsuccessfully to do with build for the geotechnical work. Trying to get a commitment that we could pursue a project before we had the grant agreement in place. And so that has been, that has been difficult to get through with build. And in regards to the two Oregon funding options, I was told last week that those are likely not options.
Okay, so. Grants, those are grants though, but can I, can I take this fifteen million dollars and put it in whatever checkbook I want to of the ports? If we had already spent ten bucks on something else, can I take this money and put it there as long as it was for the intended purpose?
That's a little bit risky because you, you want to make sure that those funders. Would agree with the way that the contract was let. And you've got to make, you've got to make the case and that was the very difficult process that we were unsuccessful with, with build.
So let me ask, let me ask you another question along the same lines. So Kevin, there's no money set aside right now on the first five million to do the geotech?
Build, the build funds are entirely committed to geotech and design work.
That's the next five million and so on. It's not the current five million.
Right. The, the five million that we would be receiving, let's say the end of this calendar year. The, all of this work would be available for it.
Okay, so, so another option that we have for us. Is that we start out, get going on this estimate and it's going to take three months to do it. And by the time we turn them on, it's not going to be until mid, late September. To November, December. We may have a. I'm thinking about it. It, it depends on when in, in December, these funds come available. So you could spend, let's say we spend sixty thousand now. Out of the five million that we've got and we're betting on the come that the balance of, what is it, twenty-eight thousand? Which will probably hit cash flow wise in, in December. Will have the grant in place or. We'll have to take it out of someplace else. We'll have to fund it from bridge tolls. Is that not true?
Well, where, where it would be funded from, that Fred's probably better suited to answer that, but to answer the first part of that. As soon as we have that grant agreement signed with ODOT. We can start incurring costs to be reimbursed from.
Okay, so we got to get ODOT to sign it in October.
Well, but that's, that's what I'm saying. We're not going to be, have that contract signed until late December. So we can start incurring expenses, assuming everything is, is in line, you know, January one.
I really don't want to wait till January one to do this estimate. So. I think Port needs to come up with some other options of how to fund this. Use what we've got left over from the five million. And where could we pull the balance of it out of other funding that's around?
Was that the recommendation of the working group as well or the preference of the working group?
Well, the, the, the working group, I would say they were supportive of doing the work. I kind of sensed that they wanted the, how it was going to be funded was really more a responsibility at this time of the Port Commission. Just because of the inner workings of the House Bill 2017 balance and.
That's a fair statement. I, I agree with what Kevin said. I'd really like to continue with the work and get it going, both of those two items. And, and where that funding is going to come from, they're challenging the port to come back with options. Or execute options.
And is staff saying there are none?
No, no, those were, I, I did have, I could bring it back up here for you. Just the, let me see.
Well, if the preference is to start now, what's, what is the option to start now? That's what we want to talk about.
So the, that would be option two, where what we would be looking at is. Reducing, pulling back on some of the current project. And just monitoring, you know, every dollar that goes out and we would be doing it anyway since we're getting near the end. But since, you know, we've got until the end of December, we'll just have to be. Really monitored, monitoring the work. Now, if the eighty-eight thousand dollars, which was the contract amount. If you recall, I'm only showing a twenty-two to thirty-three thousand dollar negative on that spreadsheet. So, you know, theoretically, you know, we could, you know, pull back to try to get to that twenty-two thousand dollar mark. And so it's not having to pull back the full eighty-eight thousand. It's really just the portion that's the small part. And I think we can do that. I think we can reduce. Some of the elements on the current project, for example, some of the governance work. Once the, would certainly be eligible for the ODOT transfer funds. You know, so those, those are all other aspects of the overall project that the next funding tranche would be able to fund.
Kevin, I have two questions. Number one, is there a way would? Have you talked to WSP in, in the discussion of doing the cost estimate? Them knowing that we are going to receive money, can we organize the contract for? I, I don't know if I would want to call it a deferral or just have it. Be in place where they start the work now knowing, or does that not work with the way that the grants are written?
I think, I think that's a legal problem, Christie.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to get to some direction here. I know Kevin had, Kevin had to get kind of to these funding option ideas fairly quickly. Do we want to see? Specifics at the next meeting as far as what? It would have to look like numbers wise to move forward with number two and then. Decide then if that is something we can possibly do?
You know, there's another approach that we could do if, Kevin, if you get back to WSP and I think there would be understanding of this. Because I, I think talking with WSP, they understand why we need to get this estimate done. If we go ahead and proceed right now and we see the first of December. That we're going to be out of money. There is an option is that we could stop that effort. Or put a hold on that effort until the first of January to finish it. With the remaining funds that we need coming out of the new five million dollars. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So let's say that, that we can't afford, you know, fifty, fifty thousand of the eighty-eight thousand and, and we're spending it. And we get to November and you've done your evaluation and you've got. You're going to have to come back, you know, ten million bucks, I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars to, to get within allowance. Yeah. We could, we could throttle that effort back, put it on hold for two or three weeks. Come back in after the beginning of the year and finish it. That way we would have the numbers, you know, no later than. Late January, which is a lot better than April. That's another, that's another option that we've got here.
Well, and I think that that would fall under, you know, to be on the options, you know. We would be monitoring those expenditures with WSP and, and others. And if for some reason. We need to, as you say, throttle back, then we do that. Or we come back with another option to complete the, the effort.
Hey Genevieve, could you please take that screen off for me real quick? I want to see everybody.
Yeah, let me get up that.
Or Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, she handed it off.
So it sounds like we. That's the way we might want to go here. Michael, do you want to weigh in on this now or after you've had some time to consider this with staff? As far as any concerns or any? Additions to this one?
Well, I'll just say that I'm comfortable with option two because this is not a significant amount and option two. Gives us some options to resolve it as we monitor costs and. Determine if there is an imbalance, then we would simply come back to the commission with a recommendation or two for. Where the funding might come from, as long as, meaning what other project it might be taken from. But I don't think it's a significant amount. And I do think Commissioner Fox's idea is if it passes legal muster where there's a way to put a. Minimal pause on the, the work, the PC work. That we could then catch, have the funding catch up. That gives us another option to consider, so. I think there's flexibility and I think this is, in the end, it's not a large amount. What we do want to do whenever possible is to make sure that the grant funding that we have is available to pay for the expenses we're occurring. But this gets us almost the way there.
This is, this is a balancing act and I've done this many, many years with the Department of Energy. You, the, the game that we're playing here is we want to spend all of the money, but we can't go a nickel over. Okay, that's, that's the challenge. And as you get closer to the end of that year. You know, the ability to turn on and turn off gets kind of. Kind of fuzzy and the accuracy of the numbers you're playing with get a little, little fuzzy. But here's a case, and I've done this all the time, is that we can put a hold on certain amount of work as long as you've got that planned upfront. And just deferred into the next. Next fiscal year, what we used to do, in this case, is the next tranche of money that comes available. You're going to do that anyway with, with the other work associated with the first five billion dollars. I mean, if you came right up to the end of it and you got more work that you've, than you've got funds, you got to shut the work off anyway.
Good point. Yep.
I think it would show really good faith to the Bay State Group if we pursued that avenue.
So I'd like to, I'd like each commissioner to let me know if they're okay with that. That way staff has clear direction on this one.
I'm good. Commissioner Fox.
Yeah. Sounds totally manageable to me.
Then you have, then you have four commissioners telling you the same thing.
Hey, sounds good. Appreciate the direction there.
All right, if there's no more questions there, we can move into Michael's. Executive Director Report. Thank you, Kevin.
How about the financial report?
That's, was in informational only and I didn't receive any questions.
Okay.
All right, so I'll go quick here. It's not in my report, but we had two interns this summer, each Cole Kendall and Victoria Mallory working on. Record keeping and file management and managed pretty much day-to-day by Genevieve. Did excellent work. They, what do you think Genevieve took out at least one full file cabinet and hard files that are now electronic?
All four of those file cabinets, which are records that go back to the thirties, have been digitized and archived. Which is fantastic. It's something I've been wanting to do for five years and they completed it in just a couple of months. And they were, they were really incredible professional people and, and. I was just really impressed with the speed and the accuracy of their work.
Part of the funding for that came from an SDAO grant. For the two new commissioners, we, maybe we haven't briefed you on it, but we typically have a fall planning session and a spring planning session. Fall planning is typically the, the meeting where we look ahead over the horizon longer, farther. And look at larger policy matters. The spring planning session is really a setup piece for the, the annual budget preparation. So we're looking ahead to fall planning. I would ask each commissioner to look at October nineteenth as a date. That's not fixed at all. We can move that, but it is a regular commission meeting day. Typically it would start, well, we'll see where it covered. It's typically at noon. When we're in person, there's lunch and then we continue on for what can be four hours of. Discussion. We'll prepare an agenda, a draft agenda in the next few weeks. We'll share it. Likely at the, the second meeting in September. But I'd ask each commissioner to be thinking about what are those items that you think are appropriate for a fall planning? Again, larger policy related or, or future related. I mentioned one of my work plan goals is the more regular meetings with commissioners, so. Forgive me, but I had to sit down and work through a specific meeting day with. I put down each of four commissioners, since President Shepard, we, we converse often and we'll get together when needed. I just focused on the other four commissioners. There's nothing magic about this, but it is a way that we can lock into the schedule. These are Wednesdays. They don't have to be Wednesdays, but they're at least a day that typically is open or more open in my calendar. And so I would ask you, each commissioner that's named here to look at that list and see if that's. If you can make those dates or if you see a enduring or continuing conflict. But I would like to then get these on the calendar so that we have a regular time. And as I said in the memo, each commissioner you can meet, does not have to be lunch, it can be anytime during the day. Or you need, this might happen to cancel. So if the commissioner's there could get back to me, I'd appreciate it. I want to focus just briefly on the board training that occurred on the July nineteenth. This, I named or identified a woman named Miley Akins that provides the governance. Advice and I think she is something, someone that we want to have. Available on a sort of retainer. So we can continue with the board training and this is something that's connected directly to my work plan goal I have. The fact that we have new commissioners and a new board makeup. And we're also looking at some larger significant projects that I think we would all benefit from, from having some. Some outside governance, governance expertise when we need it. Just want to give a shout out to John Mann. This, this facilities manager is, he's around all the time. I think he looks down on the bridge and probably thinks about it every night. But there was a case where a sprinkler was hit on a Friday night and. The fire department was called and John was probably first on the scene, but. I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank him for that in front of the commission because that's. The kind of responsiveness that, boy, it sure helps us when we're looking at risk management and response to all sorts of activities. Point out the AC will be meeting this month and hopefully Commissioner Gearing and Strike can be there. We'll continue discussions about aircraft. And aviation tracking technology and also on the, the policy matter related to ground leases. And I point out the flying is this weekend, so if you haven't ever been to the flying, try to make it. It's quite an event. When the planes start coming in Fridays and on the breakfast on Saturday morning, it's a lot of activity. And then just to highlight attached to the memo or to my report is. A memo that Genevieve put together related to truck speeding on the bridge. Genevieve did a marvelous job here and lays out an approach where we can get outreach going to the companies. And in some cases individuals that run heavy rigs across the bridge. We and Genevieve would ask that any commissioner would look at that and provide input directly back to her. There's another aspect of this which is related to enforcement and how or if that's possible. And that's a matter that we'll, we'll aim to bring up to the commission, likely an executive session at the meeting on the twenty-first. And you have attached my reported a calendar. This is something Commissioner Gearing spoke of. Just after she started. And I guess I would just again ask commissioners to look at this. It's, there's a lot of activities. That we could put on a calendar. What this tries to do is roll up the regular public meetings with the events that happen on the waterfront. So in terms of usefulness, we want to make sure the commission is looking at this and if that's satisfactory, there are. So in terms of usefulness, we want to make sure the commission is looking at this and if that's satisfactory, there are other. Activities or meetings or things we can put on a calendar like this. There's also a way that we can make it available to commissioners if they want to, uh, look at it and utilize it electronically. So, uh, again, looking for feedback on that. So with that, that's my report. If there are any questions, slide to answer.
I have a question on the calendar. Is that something that you can just do the outlook share so that it's just in our. Calendars because I think it's useful in just. When people ask what's going on and you can quickly pull up your calendar and say, oh, there's this. So I like it a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually two different calendars. Uh, Darryl does a great job maintaining the marina and waterfront events calendar, which is. Very thick. And then the public meetings calendar is a separate one. We can share those, those outlook I call. With all of you and you can choose to show or hide them on your devices, but it is a nice. Tool to be able, if somebody says what's happening down at the marina, you'll be able to just pull it up.
That also includes the replacement bridge meetings or is that a third calendar?
Yep, yep, yeah. I'm trying to make sure all of our committee meeting, all of our public meetings are included on the public meetings calendar. So. I could use everybody's help if I'm not part of that committee. Make sure I know your meeting schedule and we'll add it.
Great idea.
How did type word for cancer go?
Darryl, you, you can answer that. There was, they didn't have much wind until the last day, but apparently the fundraising was quite robust.
I hate, it went really, really well. Um, they raised over $220,000, which was awesome. They tried to format. That they felt was successful. Um, it was a smaller event, but had a larger, um. Uh, gain. So I'm going to say it was a win.
Good. Good. I know that was a ton of work for you. So thank you. And John, same to you and your crew. Thank you for that. And did it, did it go equally smoothly, um, on your end?
It did. It was very well run this year. As a matter of fact, um. Cleanup was really good. They did exactly, it's rare year that they are able to pull off doing exactly what they say they're going to do, but. This year they in fact did.
Good. I'm glad it went well. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else have a question for Michael or anybody else on that one? Then we will move to the by state working group report from Commissioners Fox and Chapman.
Customer Chapman, I'll, I'll go ahead and start and you jump in. We had a very good meeting, uh, last week, uh, with the by state working group. There was two topics that we addressed. The first one was, uh. Uh, talking about not authorizing the, uh, WSP to go ahead and, and develop an updated cost estimate. They did a good job, um, in developing a proposal. We worked with them over the last, you know, couple of weeks to fine tune it. I was, uh, very satisfied with, uh, their approach. There was, uh, uh, two clarifications that we needed on it. I was happy with one of the clarifications. The second one though, I, I'd just like to make sure that we've got. Agreement in this body here and that is, um. I asked the, uh, uh, the executive director to make sure that. He is going to be participating in developing owner related costs for this estimate. As you know, this bridge is going to have a lot of different components to it. Construction, engineering, all of this kind of stuff, but there's also owner related costs. That we need to make sure that gets into that estimate. And I was asked, what are those things? And those are going to be such things like. Michael and Fred and accounting, uh, any time spent. Working to support this bridge, um, they're going to charge their time to it, or if they are going to charge their time to it. We need to collect, we need to estimate those costs and get them into this cost estimate. And that's something that I think we can't hold WSP responsible for. We're going to have to do it. In this case, the executive director and his staff are going to have to come up with those costs. Uh, other things like, um, allowances for cost of capital that this project may or may not incur. One that we talked about very briefly is, are we going to have to relocate the, uh, port offices and the maintenance shed? WSP said, well, there was a study back a while back that would indicate maybe not. But there was an uncertainty in their mind. Uh, they said, that's going to have to be confirmed with further study. When I take a look at the approach on the Oregon side. I can't envision how you're going to get construction equipment. In place and working around those buildings. So I, I personally think you're going to have to do something with those, with those buildings. I suggested that. If the possibility is greater than 50%, you're going to have to move the buildings. I would put it in this cost estimate and qualify it. If you don't think it's going to be, then leave it out of the estimate and qualify it as such. Uh, I'm just concerned that we don't want to miss this opportunity to, to get the number in there or out of there, whatever it is. There's probably other things that I'm not thinking about, right of ways and so on. Anything that's owner related costs. Um, we need to get into that estimate and I think the best qualified people to do that are the people that are running the port. So. I didn't get a commitment. I may have misheard, misheard this, but I didn't get a commitment from the executive director that he would take ownership of that. And I think we've got to do that. So, so that's an open item for me on the estimate. On the second piece of it. We talk already, uh, at quite length on the, uh, uh, replacement bridge management contract. I think we've got. I think we have a good approach going forward now. There was some concern about. All of the work that Commissioner Fox did to write up the roles and responsibilities. Uh, that got challenged again, um. But I think the, the by state working group came back and said, no, we want you to build. The RFP or RFQ document. Using those write-ups, get them pounded into the right format. Add the additional sections that aren't there and then use that to go forward. Uh, so that was, I believe it was very clear direction from the, uh, uh, by state working group to proceed that way. So one open item that I see is, uh, getting the commitment that the port. Will provide owner related cost elements into the estimate. Christie, do you have any other comments?
The only other comment that I had was I really appreciated, especially on the. From the Washington side as well as the county commission, uh, about, um, working together. To, you know, they've got their boilerplate documents for RFPs, um, for Clickatack County and for Hood River County. And they basically said that they'd like to take the working document that Commissioner Fox has started. And work together to try and come up with something that is. Not, not necessarily all encompassing, but as encompassing as possible, um, with. With all of our agencies before moving forward and in talking to an outside agency to, um. Finalize the, the RFP.
And it's my understanding, it's my understanding, Kevin, you've already received that document from Commissioner, um.
Anderson.
Anderson?
Yes, and I'll, I'll touch on that during the, uh, action item.
Okay. And then, then, uh, the last thing I committed to. Is that once we have these two formats, Oregon, Washington, and we've kind of put them together. I would be more than happy to basically take the write-up that I did. And attempt to pound it in for the first flush on this revised format.
Yeah, I, I certainly appreciate, uh, the work you've done on that Commissioner Fox. I have received. Samples from Clickatack County and other, uh, agencies. And so I've already completed section one. Uh, the background information and now I'll be working to try to assimilate. All of the other documents into that, uh, framework that you had. And I, I'll be doing that hopefully this week, uh, get that finished up and then, um. You know, we'll be able to have at least a starting point. It won't have everything, but I think it will have a, it'll be a good starting point. I, I would, uh, I would add before we get into the action items, uh, Stuart Benyon. Who is the engineering lead for WSP is in attendance. I, I don't know if you, uh, saw his name or not. Uh, but if you do have any questions, uh, for Stuart or WSP. Uh, either regarding the preliminary cost estimate or any other elements. Uh, he is available and if, uh, Commissioner Shepherd, if it's, uh. Not too much of an inconvenience, maybe we could, uh, move that amendment number six. Up, uh, to be considered first. So Stuart, uh, can, can get out of here.
Fine by me, absolutely.
Stuart, do you want to say hi?
Hello, everybody.
Mike, do you have any, do you have any comments or questions for Stuart? All right, Stuart.
I'm just listening.
Consider this meeting an insurance policy. It was just good that you were here in case any questions or comments came up. So, yeah, thank you.
Happy to help, Kevin. Thank you.
So why don't you just segue right into that, Kevin?
Yep. So you've got the, uh. Amendment number six to the contract with WSP for an updated replacement bridge preliminary cost estimate. And staff is recommending approval on that. Based upon feedback from the by state working group.
Uh, this is Commissioner Chapman. I can. Um, motion to authorize amendment number six with WSP for an updated preliminary cost estimate.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Fox, I second the motion.
Uh, it's moved in second and, uh, all in favor, please?
Commissioner Fox, aye.
John and I.
Garing, aye.
Shepherd, aye as well. Motion passes.
Stuart, thank you. We'll see you, we'll see you shortly.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And, uh, Kevin.
And let's see, the last item. For action is the, um. Replacement bridge management contract, uh, procurement document. Uh, this is, uh, we touched on this during the review of the by state working group, uh. Recap. Uh, I did contact, uh, Schwab Williamson, who is our port outside council and they are available. It may not be Bill Ollie, who is our normal, uh, outside counsel, but he certainly has access to people within his firm. To review, uh, the documents as they are, uh, finished internally by the port and the working group. Uh, got a great number of templates, uh, from both sides of the river. Uh, including the, uh, I five project as well. So I think we've got some really good samples to draw from. And so I think that my focus this week will be, uh, developing. Uh, the RFP pulling from the documents that have been submitted. And then I will be reviewing that internally with, um, those that were, um. Obviously with staff, but also with the members of the by state working group. So I, I think we've got a good, uh, good direction going forth. And again, this recommendation in the staff memo, uh, was also, uh. There is consensus by the by state working group to perceive this in this manner.
One slight modification to this, this document, um. The second bullet says utilize templates created and or used by. Commissioner Fox, et cetera. It's more than the template. It's the content that Fox put together. Needs to get transferred over to. The other template and, and, uh, where needed added to.
Yep, absolutely.
Just change the word template to content?
Yep. Just. Or templates, templates slash content.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you want to have any questions, comments? If not, someone would like to make a motion for this one?
I can make a motion.
Go ahead, Heather.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize a preparation of solicitation to select a replacement bridge management contractor.
Chapman can second.
Move then second to all in favor?
Commissioner Fox, aye.
John.
Garing, aye.
And Shepherd is aye. Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Um. Item number nine, confirmation of commission directives to staff. I have. Well, outside of motions, which are quite obvious, I have one on my list from this evening. That we spoke about earlier, um, Genevieve, which, what else do we need to confirm for you? Or Michael?
Well, Darryl's, Darryl's putting the list, keeps the list. So let's.
Okay, so, um, I had Commissioner Fox asking the executive director. For, um, the ports owner related costs. So that to me sounded like a directive for Michael. Is that. Something from before or is that one that should be added to this?
Yeah, that sounded like a directive. I think this would be consistent with and commensurate with the preparation of the project cost estimate.
Okay.
But could you say that again?
This work, we've done a lot of work already on this subject, about two years worth of work. So the point now is to try to ascertain some costs and ascribe them to. Various impacts to port operations and our, and staff involvement. Those, that work will take place along with the, the project cost estimate being prepared by WSP.
Okay. So just to make sure I understand, you're committing that you will provide owner related costs. Into the WSP estimate. Per that schedule.
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last, um, one that I would just ask is the, uh, what Commissioner Fox was asking for, for the content. Um, for the template, is that a directive or is that? Something that the by state working group was doing. It was that a directive to staff? I just want to confirm that.
I don't think so. I think.
He's already given the content.
I've got it. Yep.
Okay. I've got a follow up one for you, Darryl. So the, the truck speeding, uh, campaign was part of a prior commission directive. And, uh, Michael talked about it. It is in his executive director's report. There was a sample. I'd like to deploy that, um, as soon as possible. So maybe if you couldn't. If, if we could confirm how much time for commission input should be there and, and then, uh. Close to a date certain that you'd like to deploy that campaign?
That feels closer to an action item or discussion, um.
It was a prior commission direct.
Yeah, it was. And then I think we were fine with it.
Okay, okay to deploy.
Comment, but if, yeah.
Okay.
And then Darryl's are also the directive on the, uh, remaining task funding discussion about. Option B.
Option two. That one I thought was what you had said that we were, uh, we had all voted on. So yes, the option number two.
There's no.
Everybody voted to move forward with that.
There was, there was no actual vote. It was just making sure that everybody was. Clear, it was on the same page on that one. So.
Yep, we have that one.
And with any others we missed from anybody? Did I cover it? Okay. Then we will move to commission call. Commissioner Fox, anything to add?
I've had, um. A, a John Hardham, um, contact me about. contact me about potentially coming in and talking to the port commission about an idea his group has had to build a an event center, musical event center somewhere in Hood River. And they would like to talk to us about possibly working with us and finding a site down on the, on the port. And they would like to come in and give a 15 minute presentation to us at, at our discretion, but they're suggesting that September the 21st or October the 5th.
As this is a property development request, should we, Michael forward them to Greg? How should we get back to them?
Oh, I think hearing a presentation by this group, they're well known would be beneficial. I don't think there's anything at the going in part that would prevent it from being in public session, just a, just a presentation.
Sounds good.
So shall we put that down for the 21st tentatively?
Yeah, let's, let's take a look at the agendas for the next couple of meetings, make sure they're balanced, but let's make sure we get them in. That'd be great.
Okay. So somebody get back to me as far as which date you'd like. Please.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garing, anything?
Um, I just wanted to say that I've had several people, I'm new to the airport advisory committee, but I've already had a lot of people contacting me about their desire to see development with hangers and the big list and the need for hangers. So I'm excited to talk to Tech, Tech Arrow some more and work towards development.
Commissioner Chapman?
I'm good. Thanks.
Nothing for me either. So with that, if there's nothing else from staff, we will recess this regular session and move into executive session under ORS 192 dot 6602E real estate negotiations. We can stop the live stream when Genevieve has time and we'll take a five minute break before starting executive session.